This is the DuPage County Zoning Board of Appeals. We're here this evening to consider Z 21031, the Stoltz petition. This is a request, number one, for a conditional use to allow a self-storage facility. Number two, a variation will increase the FAR from .3 to approximately .8. Number three, a variation reduce the north rear setback from 40 feet to 25 feet to accommodate the proposed site plan. Number four, variation reduce the setback for two existing signs from 15 feet from the property line to approximately zero feet to accommodate keeping the existing same sign pole location. Number five, variation to reduce the east interior side setback from 20 feet to approximately eight feet to retain and continue to use our existing driveway for site access while also extending the east driveway north for continued site access and increased fire hazard safety flexibility. And six, variation reduce the west corner side yard setback from 30 feet to approximately zero feet to retain west driveway north for continued site access and increased fire hazard safety. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on June 30, 2021. We have five members present in person and two members present by Zoom. I find that a quorum is present with or without regard to the special rules related to public hearings during the COVID proceedings, those being promulgated by the Illinois Attorney General. I have, this petition has been circulated to the various departments of the county and neighboring municipalities and taxing authorities, et cetera. I have an objection filed by Carol Stream, which is available for, we, each of us have it in our packets. It's available to the petitioner. And I have no other comments or objections filed to date by any of the other bodies to whom the petition was circulated. Who's presenting for the petitioner this evening?
I am, sir.
Okay. Could you, well, let's have everybody who's going to speak tonight or even answer questions, raise your hands or be sworn in.
Mr. Salvis, sir, affirm the testimony about to give this cause and our hearing. The truth, the holdings, and nothing but the truth.
Okay. Would you identify yourself, sir, and then begin with presenting your exhibits? We have some exhibits, but I want them marked with, hopefully, the survey as exhibit number one and the site plan as exhibit two. And then you can just go on from there, number them in any order that you care to.
May I?
Sure.
If I did it A through E, but they are in the order requested, this is up to E.
This is the site plan?
Yes, sir. Plus some additional after added.
Okay. So we'll accept all of these exhibits, but why don't you take this two and post it so that we can all see it as you refer to it and then take it back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. I indicate publication in the Daily Herald on June 30, 2021. Everything I need to do, so it's over to you, sir.
Well, we'll go with that one for now. That's fine. Good evening. My name is Ryan Biller, B S M Boy, I L L E R. I'm counsel for petitioner John Stoltz. Present in person tonight is petitioner John Stoltz. He's sitting back there. Also present are the architect Ed Reiden and the civil engineer Dan Haveler, who are part of the team. We are also expecting John's son Luke to be present via Zoom, and it looks like we have him. I did tender a series exhibits, of exhibits for admission. They are Exhibit A, it's a copy of the survey. You guys should have a copy in front of you. Exhibit B is the site plan, and as tendered tonight, it also includes some topographic information. Exhibit C is just a copy of the initial zoning application that was filed by Mr. Stoltz. Exhibit D is a copy of the letter that was circulated notifying people of the hearing that was taking place tonight. Exhibit E is a summary that Mr. Stoltz submitted earlier today. Exhibit F is actually a stormwater management letter that is indicating preliminary clearance when it comes to wetlands. And then Exhibit G is a group exhibit, just with some photographs, to the extent you gentlemen, and, you know, everyone wants to refer to them to get an idea of what's there and then what we want to do with the property. And before I get started, Mr. Stoltz would like to say a few words. Is that okay with all of you?
Well, it's up to you. We have limited these hearings during our COVID period to one hour. We don't need to do that tonight. We can go a little bit beyond that, but.
It'll be brief, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of edits.
Okay.
Just myself.
Okay, go right ahead.
My name is John Stoltz, and my son Luke Stoltz, remotely, he's actually in Arizona, were the owner developers of this storage project. Want to thank all of you board members for your time and consideration, and especially Paul and Jessica, who have been a tremendous help to myself, the family, my team, just in understanding the process. And then just briefly, just kind of explaining a little bit of who I am and my family. We've actually owned the 2.37 acres there on North Avenue, two tenths of a mile, you know, east of County Farm. My dad and mom, we moved out from Chicago in 1955. They bought that property. And we developed, my dad on the side, he was an AT&amp;T engineer, and on the side with several tradesmen, they built the 12-room motel. So I actually grew up there, a couple of the units initially when we were building it. So just taking you back to 1950s and 60s, I'm not going to bore you with that, but I think it's important here. We've owned the property for 60 years. I went to Benjamin School, West Chicago High School. We ran the motel. My dad passed away, actually, the last day of my junior year in high school, 1965. And it was a godsend because my mom ran the motel until she was 90 years old. We've had a great and harmonious relationship with DuPage County, anywhere from, you know, police department, administrative, everything. My mom was a wonderful lady. I had her finally come with me at age 90. She just recently passed away at age 100. And she ran the property there for years. And the property to me is like sacred land in our family. And by being there 60 years, we've struggled since her death exactly what we want to do. You know, do we want to open, as I expressed to Paul, do we want to build another 60 units of motel because we've been in that business and know that customer service? Should we sell it? And ultimately, my family and I decided that we wanted to keep the property and develop it. And we did a lot of research on self-storage. We had a detailed feasibility study before we put our foot in the water regarding the viability of self-storage as an industry and specifically our three-to-five-mile radius. And the study came back, we did it with Cushman Wakefield, and they have a, you know, a vertical market segment on self-storage. And the report came back very favorable. And we'll get into this, as Ryan will explain, but there is very, very high demand in the three-to-five-mile radius for climate-controlled self-storage. There's several competitors, or which will be competitors, in the three-to-five-mile radius, but there's probably only two or three that have been built like a 2021 modern, state-of-the-art, all the bells and whistles from technology and security and safety, those type of things. There's a lot of, you know, probably 15 or 16 other facilities, but they were all built in the 1980s. So no bad reflection upon them. It's just that since the 80s, there's been so much improvement. So that is what really, you know, made the decision for the family. We're going to keep the property, not sell it. We're going to develop it. And in our minds, you know, we dealt with the public and the county for 50 years with the motel. We know how to give good customer service. And it's, you know, we're going to do the same thing here. It's just in the units, it's going to be storage and belongings as opposed to live people. So anyway, thanks for the time. I just wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about the family history and where we're coming from in getting to this point. So thank you very much.
Ryan Biller again.
Yeah. Mr. Biller, can you give us kind of an overview of how you're going to proceed? You have conditional use request and then five additional variations. How, tell us, give us the sort of index of what you're going to do, how you're going to present this.
Well, and I had planned on giving you an overview of the project, which Mr. Stoltz did a little bit, give you some highlights about what a climate-controlled self-storage facility might look like. And then I was going to address each of the variances and the conditional use in turn.
Okay.
And the various requirements that DuPage County wants to have dealt with in connection with them. It's going to get a little redundant because some of the variances are similar in nature, so my responses there too will be, you know, consistent, a little different one than the next.
Okay.
Is that procedure okay with you?
Absolutely. Just wanted to sort of put in perspective for us to key in.
Yes, sir. All right. So the property we're dealing with is located at 27 West 010 North Avenue, West Chicago, Illinois. It sits at the northeast corner of the intersection at Ethel Street and North Avenue. And as you know, it currently has on it a motel, but that motel has not been in operation for several years. The property is in an area zone B2, which is general business district, which is intended to accommodate the needs of a consumer population. And we believe that this self-storage facility, if granted a conditional use, can further fulfill the needs of the consumer population in the three-to-five-mile area around it. We already discussed that there was a Cushman and Wakefield market study that was performed. What you guys are probably used to when it comes to self-storage are the one-story, non-climate-controlled buildings. And I think there is this, a bit of a stigma associated with them because people don't know who's coming and going at any time, what might be put into those storage units, and, you know, what exactly is going on. That's not what we propose. Over the last 10 to 15 years, there has been a shift in self-storage industry, new urban and suburban areas. They are now moving towards multi-storm and climate-controlled secure facilities. And that's exactly what we want to do here. These facilities have such things as indoor loading and unloading bays, enhanced lighting, video surveillance, manager monitored access control systems, and electronic smart locks. The exterior of these buildings is designed to be handsome. It'll use, or they can use, depending upon what the development looks like in the general vicinity, anything from stone bricks, stucco, wood, or other enhanced panels to make sure that it is an attractive facility. Windows are also being increasingly used, again, just to make the self-storage facility fit in a little bit better with surrounding structures. This proposed facility will be operated and professionally managed, if allowed, by National Self-Storage Real Estate Investment Trust, which does have an existing market presence in the greater Chicagoland area. They're no strangers to what my client intends to do here. We have talked to stormwater management. We are preliminarily advised that the proposed development has, or poses no wetland concerns. And we are confident that will continue to be the case if continued, allowed to move forward. We also want to note, and this kind of goes towards some of the traffic concerns that you guys might have, 90% of the proposed development's units will be located inside the building. You know, there will be some loading and unloading outside, but that's only a small number of units. And they will, other than the initial populating of the facility itself with clients, once it's essentially filled, people aren't going to be coming and going regularly. This isn't going to be a high-traffic operation. It's going to be a handsome building setback from North Avenue that, you know, should widely operate with no issues to the surrounding area. We do expect most of the customers for the facility to come from the local three-to-five-mile trade area. There will be a manager and up to one employee on site Monday through Saturday from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There will also be some limited hours on Sunday where staff will be present. Customer access otherwise will be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. So we're not talking about a 24-hour facility here. We do, the HVAC, it'll be roof-mounted and properly screened, so it won't pose any sort of issues from a site perspective. Kind of the biggest variation that we request tonight is the first one on your list. And it's an increase of the floor access ratio for B2-zoned areas from a .3 to approximately .8. And I would like to note at this time, the .8 floor access ratio number wasn't pulled completely out of thin air. If you look at the industrial zoning requirements for DuPage County, they do allow four self-storage facilities like this one, a floor access ratio of up to .8. And so our request in that regard is it consistent with what we would otherwise be allowed to do if this area was zoned industrial? And the reason why the .8 floor access ratio is critical is because we do want to put up a multi-level facility. If it's less than .8, then it will be restricted primarily to a single-level facility, which will essentially be turning back the clock to the units that we're trying not to build. We're trying to improve upon them here. This particular variation, we do think it's in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, it goes a little bit beyond what B2 contemplates. However, it is going to be a boon to the consumer population and residents in the area because they will now have a high-tech self-storage facility to access, so they should choose. Inconsistent with that, we really just don't believe that anything about this facility will be injurious to the community because, again, it's going to be secure, monitored, and not a high-traffic development. We don't believe, despite this being a multi-story facility, we don't believe that it's going to impair the light, supply of light near to adjacent property. Immediately to the east of the proposed development is Illinois Department of Transportation-owned wetland. That wetland is not going to be particularly concerned. As far as we know, and we haven't heard anything from the Illinois Department of Transportation to date, that they're concerned with any lighting issues posed by this development. We do anticipate the development, if it goes forward, to be over 100 feet back from North Avenue. So, you know, anything south of North Avenue shouldn't be affected by any shadows cast by the building. The western bound of this property is Ethel. And again, there's going to be plenty of space in between the building and any facilities or residences, you know, to the, to the west of the proposed development. And then to the north, the nearest crop, the nearest neighbor is over 100 feet from the north property line of the proposed development. We don't believe that this will increase any, there won't be any increased hazard resulting from fire as a result of this development. This will be a sprinkle, there will be a sprinkler system installed in the building. If we're allowed the variances requested, there should be adequate drive for fire trucks and other fire access should the situation become necessary. We don't think that the proposed development will diminish the value of anything in the area. Currently, the property's improved with a motel that is vacant. And what we want to do is take that vacant space and put a useful commercial building on, in its place. As I already referenced earlier, I don't see a self-storage facility posing any additional traffic concerns, other than, you know, people moving in and out. There isn't going to be a lot of traffic otherwise. We don't have any reason to believe that development will create any potential flood damage to adjacent property or along those lines, increase the public expense for flood protection, rescue, or relief. And we don't believe that a state-of-the-art, secure, climate-controlled, self-storage facility will impair the public health, safety, comfort morals, or general welfare of DuPage County and the residents therein. So that's why the floor access ratio is important. As far as the additional variances, we want to reduce the north setback from 40 to 25 feet. This is so we can put a couple of those additional structures you see on the site plan there. So these structures in the back are going to be single-story. They're not going to be, the only structure that's going to be multi-story will be the big one in the middle you see on that site plan. These structures in the back, they'll also have storage units. There will be a fence along the northern bound of the property. So the neighbor to the north really should not be bothered by the addition of these two additional buildings. The part, the other reason why we want this setback is so we can increase driveway access to the facility. Because it's a self-storage facility, people need to get to their units. We want drives surrounding the building and all around. If there was only drive on one side or the other, that could impair traffic flow on the site itself. For similar reasons already mentioned, we think that this self-storage facility and the proposed variation is consistent with the general purpose of the zoning ordinance. Won't injure the neighborhood, won't be detrimental to public welfare, conflict with DuPage's comprehensive plan for developments. We don't think changing the setback at all on the north end of the property is going to create any problems from a lighting perspective or increase any, or increase the hazard associated with fire, other dangers. Again, not going to diminish the value of land and buildings throughout the county, increase congestion, increase the potential for flood damages, or incur additional public expense for flood protection. And again, reducing the setback to the north also won't impair the public safety, health, comfort, or morals of DuPage County in any way. There are two existing signs on the property, and they are currently within a setback. So what we want to do is reduce that setback so the owners here can keep the existing sign locations and retrofit them with new signage for the proposed development should it go forward. You have pictures in front of you of what the signs look like, should you want to look at them. In my packet here, can I give you a small version? It's going to be group exhibit.
Were we looking for a picture of the current sign?
Yes, sir. It's in group exhibit G. It should be at the end of your packet.
Right.
You got the one there that's, that motel sign on it. Can't really miss it. And the other is just a post. Ownership would like to reuse that. We don't think that, there is practical difficulty if we're not allowed to go, reuse the existing signs. Some of them have electrical going to them. We don't have to remove and replace the electrical. We do not have to. It would be much better to use what's in place. And again, put a new attractive sign on the existing signposts. We do think allowing the existing signage to remain in place is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. The signs have been there for several years. Allowing them to remain there should not create any additional harm. And I think that same argument, the fact that they have been there for so long, we don't believe that there's going to be any impact on light near to adjacent property. We don't believe that there's any increased hazard associated with fire or other dangers. We don't think allowing the signs in the same place is going to diminish the value of land and buildings throughout the county. Signage really has no impact on the traffic congestion. We don't think the signs are going to increase the potential for flood damage to adjacent property or increase a public expense for flood protection. And these signs, as far as I know, haven't posed any danger to the public up until this point, and we expect that to remain the case. The next variation that ownership seeks is they want to reduce the east interior side setback from 20 feet to eight feet. That's what you see here along the right-hand side of the site plan. There is an existing drive there right now, but the existing drive is right at this border down here. And what ownership wants to do is extend the drive beyond all the way to the back of the building to, again, allow customers easy access to the storage facilities of the proposed development. There would be a particular hardship if this variation is not requested. We're dealing with a driveway that has been in place for several years. Ownership is not interested in having to move it. And in addition, in order for them to move forward with their project in a meaningful fashion, they will need to give their customers access to all parts of the facility, not just the very front. So we do want to increase the driveway essentially all the way from North Avenue to fairly close to the northern bound of the property. This is also going to have an impact on fire protection. It'll allow fire trucks easier access to the rear of the premises. So it is, you know, a benefit should there be any sort of problem with the property down the road. We do think granting this variation would be consistent with the harmony and general purpose of the existing zoning ordinance. Again, the driveway, driveway to an extent already is there. We just want to make it longer. Driveway being totally flat is going to affect the light near neighboring properties. Driveway shouldn't increase any hazard related to fire. Again, it actually helps mitigate any sort of fire issues should they come up. Making the existing driveway longer shouldn't diminish the value of land and buildings throughout the county. Again, we're trying to improve a non-producing premises and replace it with a producing premises. Making the driveway longer should have no inherent impact on the volume of traffic. It's just going to make it easier for customers who do want to access the proposed development to get to where they need to be. Driveway also shouldn't pose any additional danger for flood damages or expense related there, too. And a driveway should not be injurious in any way to public health, safety, comfort morals, or the general welfare of the inhabitants of DuPage County. Similar to that last variance, an additional variance that ownership wants, they want to reduce the west corner side yard setback from 30 feet to approximately zero feet to retain the west driveway going north, and then they want to make it longer. As you can see on the site plan, and there are photographs along these lines, too, there is a driveway to the west of where the motel sits now. And what ownership wants to do is just make it longer. And again, connect it to the driveway on the east side. So essentially, first, they have the access to drive a loop around the building. The only points of ingress and egress right now is going to remain the one off the vessel that's already there. Although this looks like an entrance, it really isn't right now. A little, let me see, just the work of the main ingress and egress. And we do believe that this is a necessary variance because, again, we want to connect the drives to allow for customer access easily to all, all parts of the facility and also to the two one-story buildings in the back should we be allowed to develop them. We don't believe that granting this variance is inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance in place. Again, we're taking what's already there and just making it a little bit longer. A driveway in and of itself isn't going to impact light near neighboring properties. It's not going to increase fire hazard at all. And like we said with the driveway to the east, having more driveway to the west will help fire trucks access the premises should there be a problem. We don't think the lengthening of the driveway is going to diminish the value of the landed buildings throughout the county at all. We don't think the driveway is going to increase any traffic congestion in any meaningful way. We don't think extending the driveway is going to increase the potential for flood damages or create additional expense for the same, or otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort, and morals, or general welfare of the inhabitants of DuPage County. And then last but not least, and I think we've already kind of touched on all of these things, ownership does seek, petitioner does seek conditional use as a self-storage facility. B2 zoning does. B-two zoning does allow for some warehousing and storage as it is right now, but self-storage, we believe probably requires conditional use in order for the owners to move forward with this project. And as we already stated, we want to take a motel that is not in operation and hasn't been for several years and replace it with a multi-story, climate-controlled, modern, secure facility that the public can use to store their goods should they need it. We don't think that this conditional use is going to impact the supply of light near to adjacent property. Ownership wants to keep the existing front lawn as it already stands, so the building will be sufficiently set back from North Avenue. And as I said earlier, we have the wetlands to the east, you got Ethel Street to the west, and the neighbor to the north is over a hundred feet away from the northern bound of the conditioners property. So that neighbor shouldn't be impacted by any of the proposed structures that we want to put on this property. Right now, we actually believe that a new facility with sprinkler systems will diminish the hazard related to fire and other dangers on the property because again, it's going to be a modern facility with modern plumbing that is monitored as opposed to a vacant motel. Placing modern facility on this property should not decrease the value of the buildings throughout DuPage County. It should have the opposite effect. It should increase their value because we're going to take an incredibly old motel that had a good run and replace it with a completely modern facility. I think I've been over the traffic concerns pretty much ad nauseam at this point, so I'm not going to reiterate them here. This facility, based on preliminary inspections, should not create any potential for flood damage, well, any greater than what might already be there with the motel stands, or increase any public expense for flood protection, rescue, or relief. And we don't think a modern, secure, climate-controlled, self-storage facility will impair the public health, safety, comfort morals, or general welfare of the inhabitants of DuPage County in any way, shape, or form. And with that, I will open it to you guys for any questions you might have.
Well, let me start with this. Your site plan is marked preliminary site plan. Does that mean you haven't definitively determined where the buildings will be? Or why, why does it say preliminary?
If you want to address that.
My name is Ed Wrightan, Wrightan Architects. The reason we call it out as preliminary is because we have set it all aside. We're basing it on the fact that we're intending to get, or we would like to get a point eight FAR, and that plan works the best as utilized with that. I can take the term preliminary off if so desired. It's not a
Let me explain the reason for my concern.
Sure.
I think we're going to need some additional details on the site plan. But if this project proceeds forward favorably, one of the conditions will be that the site be developed in accordance with the site plan. And so it has to be final site plan at that point.
Yes, yes.
So another issue that I have is that you're going to obviously take down any existing buildings. So this is essentially a greenfield site except for the post, signposts, and whatever driveways exist. That complicates the issue of all of these variations. You've obviously talked to your consultants and you have maximized the use of the property and indicated that you need to go substantially more than the permitted point three floor area ratio and go to point eight, as if it were in a different zoning district. Well, it's not in a different zoning district. So, you know, you need to establish why you should be given all of the relief that you've requested. Your remarks have gone somewhat conclusory that you don't think, you don't think you cause a problem with fire and you're in harmony with the general purpose of the ordinance, et cetera. But you need to show us what's the hardship? It appears to be an economic hardship to me that you want to maximize the use of the site. Next item, I don't think you need a traffic study because of the nature of this use, but you, I think, and I'll ask my colleagues to weigh in on this when they speak, I think you need to do a lot more on the site plan to show things like where is the security gate? Where is the driveway? You made some reference to a fence that I didn't catch. I don't know, some portion of the property or all the property will be fenced. I don't, maybe it's indicated on the site plan, but I don't see any, I can't determine that. I don't know if this is all of the parking that you propose because you've got five or six parking spaces. So I'd like to know an interior circulation pattern and where these driveways are so that we can determine sort of the safety issues and make our own conclusions to what you indicated. You concluded that there won't be a problem with traffic or safety or whatever. Then you've mentioned that the building will be sprinkled. Is that all buildings or just the main building or what?
The main building definitely, and in accordance with the fire codes. If, if it's required by the local fire, we will also sprinkler the outside D one-story buildings.
Okay, well, we need to, I mean, that's a factor for us to consider. Do I understand that customer access will be permitted from Monday through Sunday, six AM to six PM? Did I write that down correctly? I didn't. Oh, ten PM, okay. Some of the other, some of the other board members heard it a little differently.
Well, it was the employees would have been there Monday through Saturday, nine to six.
I got that. Yeah, that's probably right. Wait, I don't want to hear, we don't have time for hypothetical considerations. So I have your hours. You said the caretaker will be there. Is there a, is there an office someplace or quarters for the caretaker?
Yes, there will be an office in the main facility.
Okay, where is that? Could you mark that on the revised site plan that we're asking you to cook up? I don't even know, that's not an exhibit, whatever you're holding up there.
You actually do have, that's what I tendered as B, sir.
Oh, so your exhibit B, the site plan, has additional attachments?
Yes, that just came tonight. That they were inserted earlier. Yes, it is on this B that I put it.
Okay. Well, yeah, but everybody's got to see it. So could you?
Well, that's what you have in front of you. That's the same.
Fine. Well, that was a waste. You're right and I'm wrong, so proceed. You guys still here?
The office is in the front corner of the building, of the large, the three-story building. The loading comes in right at the center for the, for the cars to come in, cars and/or small trucks. And then there's elevators for the second and third floors. Again, this is, there's also a loading area at the back where people can just drive up it if they have a unit that's closer to the back, they can, they can get to those units. We also have outdoor units that are, you'll see along this side and a little bit on the front side and this side where we have storage inside the building, but they're accessed from the outside.
Okay, can we, can you include that on one main site plan?
I can.
All of these things that I've suggested, mark the fences, show us where the security gates are, indicate the office access. And by circulation, I need to know sort of where the, what the traffic direction is and the interior of the site. Again, I'm not inclined to ask for a traffic study because you're not going to complicate traffic on North Avenue. It doesn't seem to be. But we need to know, so traffic is a safety issue on North Avenue. Doesn't seem to be a problem, but it's also a safety issue on the interior of the site when everybody's rushing to get to their wine cellars or whatever this climate-controlled thing is going to do. So this is two townships. It's Bloomingdale and Wayne. So Mr. Murphy, do you want to go next with questions?
Yes, I would like to see a rendering of the building, how it looks, and also how the landscaping would be there, how it would blend in with the building. And also the circulation around all the, all the building in that, is it paved or what type of surface that they would have?
All right, so you have that now?
I have a, again, a preliminary elevation that we have put together. I don't have landscaping. We haven't gone to that extent as of yet. We know that what's there and will utilize some of that, but I'm sure there's going to have to be additional landscaping. As far as a rendering, I do have the elevations. It's just 2D. It's not a rendered Yeah, the, the, again, this, this is the elevation that was part of that packet. And it has the front, it has all four elevations of that building.
I think Mr. Murphy is asking about aesthetics.
Yes, yes.
So do you know what the building is going to look like?
Currently, we have it situated for a metal panel, insulated metal panel building. The metal panels come in numerous, numerous different textures and, and fields, but that is what we currently have.
So incorporate some of this in the follow-up site plan, if you would.
Okay.
And then would like, does anyone want to go down the line? Are you ready? Go right ahead.
The screening off of Ethel, is there going to be some type of screening? Because I'm looking at the two non-climate-controlled storage buildings and I've got this weird feeling that they're just going to be separate garage door facilities. Am I right?
Yes, that, the, the two buildings, the garage doors on the one that's adjacent to Ethel will have garage doors on the interior.
Okay.
The exterior of it on the Ethel side will be all part of the metal building.
Will there be any mutations, some screening or anything?
I'm sure that we'll, we'll end up having landscaping against them as, as part of the screening of the building itself. The building, that building is approximately eleven foot tall.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just trying to think looks-wise. So they'll be flat-roofed or are they going to be pitched?
They're pitched, but it's a, it's a low pitch. It's a half inch per foot.
Okay.
And they're pitched to the inside so that we have stormwater detention. The, the middle building is pitched both ways and has doors on both sides. And that's the reason for the drive all the way around.
That makes sense. And then there is an existing home north of there, so I just was wondering what your plans on lighting?
We have to, we have to follow the lighting and we have to follow the security of the lighting. We will provide photometrics to keep that lighting down. Most of the lighting on the small buildings is, it'll be at about ten feet high and it won't shine out. It has to shine down. The, the three-story building will have lights, but they'll be shining straight down. We just, we're not allowed to spread.
And then, yeah, sometimes it's nice to see the turn radius on some of this because you had mentioned for fire purposes. And we got a pretty good tight turn on that eastern driveway where it turns right there. Will a fire truck be able to take a turn there? And the other question was, I've used, you know, my years of moving, I used a controlled storage place and it is nice. And I used a box truck. Your loading area, if you could show us turn radiuses where he could pull in or back in or back out, that would be helpful just to make sure that this is
Okay. If we, the loading, the loading is, it says loading on, on the site plan. That's directly across from where our doors are for our loading so that we do have, you know, we have about sixty feet of, not quite, I'm sorry, fifty feet of, from the door to the, to the back specifically for the purpose of maneuverability of box trucks. Typically, these facilities, and if you've used them, don't use anything bigger than a twenty-four, twenty-six-foot box truck. Which is, exactly, which is a rental. We don't get involved with semis. They, they just don't seem to be used that way.
Okay, so when you revised the site plan, let's make sure that we understand what we're asking for. We need to see how the circulation, turning radiuses, et cetera. That's all part of the same additions that you're going to include. So that means we need to see on the site plan where the loading docks are for each of these units, or how you access your unit. I don't know how many units are in building C. I don't know where the doors are. I presume they're on all sides. But I don't
Yeah, they're on three of the sides.
Okay, well, can you show that in?
On the site plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then, Mr. Akeem, do you?
Thank you very much. Now, sir, I heard you refer somewhere to stormwater detention, but I don't see anything on the site plan. And one of the things I noticed in the pictures here is that I don't know what number it is, but there is no storm sewer in front of the building. So I think in those circumstances, stormwater detention becomes particularly important. So I think that on the site plan that you are modifying, we would like to see some kind of a stormwater plan. What, what are you doing? What do you plan to do?
We, I have the civil engineer here, but I can start that. This frontier, the front green area is the intent to make that the stormwater detention area.
Okay, but you just said in response to Commissioner Moran's question that that is part of the area where you would be able to back up box trucks, et cetera. So I'm a little confused as to what is what.
Yeah, the, the parking and the loading that we have shown is paved area and everything in front of that is green area. It's everything in front of that that will be utilized for the stormwater detention.
Okay, so I think that's what the chairman was asking for, a detailed site plan that shows these shows these things so that we are clearer in our mind as to what's going on. Then I had another question if, if, you can do that. On the preliminary site plan, you show that the buildings are the single-story buildings, B and C. Is it correct that A will be a three-story building or could you be going higher? What exactly?
No, it, we will be a three-story building for A.
All right.
I think we, I, I believe it's on there, on the building that it's called out as a three-story building. We won't be going any higher.
Okay. And then the final question I had was that your management staff is there from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, but you allow customers, like if I was one of your customers, I would have access till 10:00 p.m. So how do I get in? Do you have any security or one, I don't see anything on this.
Right, we, we will have gates and they're, they're keyed added in accordance with the number that you get.
Okay.
When you sign in, those, and you can punch that in and you can get in till 10:00. At 10:00, the system automatically locks and nobody can use it until 6:00 in the morning.
I lied when I said that was the final question. There's another one that you can show on the site plan.
Okay.
When you modify it, behind building A and C, no, it's not, is it A and C, it's B and C, sorry.
Yes.
The drive seems to go up behind it, the planned drive. Does it go between the two buildings or does it go all the way across behind B and then come back down?
It, it goes, it goes be, it goes behind C and it goes what I'm going to call in, in between the two buildings.
Okay.
And then it also goes on this side.
Okay.
There's, there's doors on this side and doors on that side, so those cars have access to those units.
So then we need to see the width of the driveway, the turning circle and everything when you redraw the plan.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir.
I think if you answer all of these commissioners' questions, you'll get most of mine, but I do have one question, and I was hoping you could impress upon me. Building B, you know, it goes beyond the 40-foot building setback and I'm trying to grapple with, why don't you just cut it off at the 40-foot setback?
Can I let the owner respond or...
Well, whoever has the answer.
So the reason that we're asking for that, one of the goals environmentally is to try to keep a lot of green space. We could have designed this and still met the DuPage County setback code by building forward on the property closer to North Avenue. What we're trying to do is reuse the existing driveways, including the main driveway that runs east-west without building on that and building to the front. So that is quite honestly what we're trying to do. We're trying to, one of the, one of the photos you have there, we're trying to preserve the park-like setting and the landscaping, sycamore trees, 40-years-old, all that stuff in the front. So that's kind of, you know, that's, that's, that's our intent.
One question for staff. I don't usually, I don't think we usually see retention, detention in the front yard right on North Avenue. Is that permitted?
Sure. Yes, detention's permitted on North Avenue. The only requirement is it has to be at least 10 feet back from the property line for every foot of depth the detention pond is.
Okay. Well, you're going to have to work that with stormwater. Yeah, I know. So do, is Anderson or Mr. Ketter have questions?
Well, I'll just say one thing. We don't have a finalized plan, so we're asking questions and leading them along. They should finalize a plan and present it. If we have questions on their plan, ask it, and then we'd know what it is. You're, you're trying to get them to do what should have been done for this presentation tonight. The only thing I would like in addition to everything that's been asked is I'd like to see their contracts for the people too. But with the lighting and everything else, we should get, you know, a clear idea of what they are requesting. Second of all, it should be explained, it's nice to have a real, you know, aesthetic thing on North Avenue, but remember, the only residential is at the back and they're pushing everything to the back, so we need a little bit more clarification. It finally came out there are trees to save in the front. This presentation has to be honed in or I'm not in a position to be able to vote or even understand it.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I think she left a while ago.
Oh, she dropped off? Okay, so my suggestion is that you get the transcript of this hearing because I don't want the new site plan to be presented and then have one of us say, well, wait, how about this? I asked for fence delineations and you didn't do that. So get the transcript and sort of make a checklist of everything that needs to be done so that we don't have any oversights. Now, I also think that, you know, there's two ways to proceed here. One, we could just take the revised site plan, evaluate it individually, and come up with our decisions, but I have a strong preference for having a second public hearing so that we can resolve and ask questions about, you know, the updates that we're going to receive. That means that we would have August 12th or 19th as our next available dates. What is the consensus of the board concerning a follow-up hearing? Do we need a hearing or do you... Okay, I, I think it's generally agreed that we do need another hearing. So then to the petitioner and the board, is August 12th or August 19 agreeable? If so, what's your preference? Kind of everybody is saying either one.
How soon before those dates do I need to get drawings to staff and into the committee?
Like...
A week?
A week?
Okay.
I mean, that's really a question for the staff because... Well, that's for us, but I want you to... All right, let's try to get it a week ahead and does that mean you want the 19th or later?
No, the 19th would be fine, thank you.
All right, fine. Well, we'll adjourn for the evening and reconvene at 6:00 in this room on August 19th, so we're continued to that date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.